Monday 22nd of June 2020, meeting in Devon Park City Council, which is being livestreamed as we speak. Council acknowledges and pays respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as a traditional and regionalised and continuing custodians of this land. All persons in attendance are advised that it's council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. This council meeting will be also livestreamed to Devon Park City Council's YouTube channel and can be accessed on YouTube. Item one is apologies and we have a full compliment of councillors' presence at our annual apologies. Item two is declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest in any item on this open part of the agenda, please? I'll mention a declare interest in 3.2. 3.2.2, thank you, councillor Milburn. Are there any other declarations of interest? Moving on to item 3.1 is confirmation of minutes. 3.1.1, confirmation of minutes of the 25th of May 2020. Do I have a mover of the recommendation, please?
So move.
Councillor Murphy, councillor Lakecock. Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Nothing to add.
Councillor Lakecock.
Nothing to add.
Any comments, questions? Councillor Murphy to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you, I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 3.2 is public question time and 3.2.1 is responses to questions raised at prior meetings. Do I have a mover of the recommendation, please?
So move.
Councillor Perry, do I have a second then?
Second then.
Councillor Hollister, councillor Perry.
Nothing to add, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hollister.
Nothing further.
Any other comments, questions? Councillor Perry to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you, I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 3.2.2, councillor Milburn, thank you. Item 3.2.2 is questions on notice from the public and we have a recommendation on page 12. Do I have a mover, please?
So move.
Councillor Perry, thank you, do I have a second then?
You do, mayor, I think you do then.
Thank you, councillor Lakecock. Councillor Perry.
Oh, nothing to add, this stage, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lakecock.
Nothing to add.
Any other comments, questions?
If I may.
Councillor Jarman.
Yeah, I'll just note that I don't agree with some of the answers through this response and I'm just wondering if I need to comment which ones lay out. At this moment, your prerogative. Well, I'm happy to discuss it further later on, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, no need.
Councillor Alexio.
No, I feel a little bit the same way as councillor Jarman with probably the one that threw me out a bit was the questions from Graham Nevin and the response on question six and question seven, it had on there referred to the answer to question. And I found myself a little bit stuck with having to make a decision on the question there with the answer that was brought forward. Just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Yes, do.
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, again, I think the responses in relation to Graham Nevin, one and two, the response is that our examination of council voice arrangements relating probable place was considered as part of the 2018. I think the question itself was in relation prior to that. I think the question, we could have potentially have answered that without having to go down that particular path. I think it was pretty obvious, the two questions that were being asked, when was the first assessment conducted concerning capacity of assets, incomes and liabilities to probable place of PPD, if I remember, to pay it before probable place? And then who carried out that assessment? I think we've given a fairly broad, generic answer, we're all aware of the process that was undertaken and probably wasn't council's best day or its best procedure in relation to how and what went through there, but I think in relation to being able to answer these questions from the public, I think we do, you know, need to pay them the respect that sometimes they deserve. Yeah, so I think those particular questions and I think the response referring to answer and we refer to answer to question one for response to question six and question seven. Again, I can understand the level of frustration that we probably feel in relation to responding to the continuing questions, but I still believe and I always will do very strongly that it is for ratepayers democratic right really to see questions and we should do everything we can to provide relatively accurate answers to those questions.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Councillor Hollister.
Yes, I'm actually going to support the recommendation, it's in the agenda. I think these questions have been coming up continually for about six years, if not more. Council has got professional staff, we get advice from them. We do have legal advice and more often than not, the legal advice we get, we take and these people that keep asking these questions continually just don't agree with the law, with the legal advice we get. I think you can get advice from four different lawyers and get four different answers, so we as a council have got to take the advice that we get from the legal advice and from our professional staff, so I'm no problem whatsoever in supporting the recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Hollister. My last, councillor Perry to close.
Thanks, ma'am, mayor, I want to thank everyone for their contribution and consider it closed, thank you.
Thank you, I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against?
Aye.
I'll ask for a show of hands, please, those in favour. Councillor Perry, councillor Lakecock, councillor Hollister, councillor Ennis, councillor Rockley. And those against? Councillor Alexio, councillor Jarman, councillor Murphy, the motion's passed, thank you. It's all good. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Milburn. Item 3.2.3 is questions without notice from the public and I do have something to read. I'll start with from Christopher Mills at 52 Caroline Street, East Devonport. Question one is the staff code of conduct. On the 3rd December 2019, I asked about the staff code of conduct. This resulted in the there confirming on the 28th of January that there would be a workshop to consider making this staff code of conduct available to the public. I made a request to attend this workshop but my request was refused by the mayor. Assuming that this workshop had actually taken place, I requested the general manager by letter on the 14th of April for ongoing confidential reasons to view the staff code of conduct. To date, there has been no response from Mr Atkins. Please, may I have a response now? Jackins.
Thanks, mayor, through you, this matter was the topic of a workshop with council set on 1st of June and is part of item 5.1.3 on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Question two from Mr Mills, the new park at 54 Caroline Street is 0.1581 hectares of steep slope. It has remained an undisturbed hazardous maintenance site with trees stabilising the slope since 1970. Delective members voted unanimously on the 24th of February for disability inclusion plan 2020 to 2025. People with disabilities and their carers will not easily be able to make their way along 50 metres of rough grass track to into the new park. For this administration now formally identify and promote the appropriate recreation routes pathways to this park. Mr General Manager, please.
Yes, through you, mayor, council doesn't currently have any plans to promote or further develop the land of 54 Caroline Street at this point in time.
Thank you. From Malcolm Garden at 4 Barmont Grove, my net, question one, with reference to draft responses in the current agenda to my questions on notice, question one and two and questions one and two on page nine, four questions including pages 14 and 17. I consider the responses invasive at best if not falsely misleading as none of the questions have ever been specifically answered demonstrating a lack of accountability. As council would be aware, the auditor general in his report does not comment on specifics related to council decision making associated with my questions rather other than his statement that a review of governance activities undertaken by DCC prior to entering into the problem of place heat lease and DCC had not met good governance principles relating to transparency, equity, participation and inclusion and effective and efficient decision making. Accordingly, I ask the simple question, in approving the signing of the initial head lease agreement with probable place Devon Park Limited, did councillors do so with a full understanding that the head lease was a non-traditional cooperative shared arrangement? In other words, a shared risk as disclosed by the there in September 2019 or an agreement that would remove the council's exposure to financial risk as represented to the community by the deputy general manager in December 2016? My response is, as previously advised, council does not intend to continue revisiting matters relating to probable place head lease and at this point has nothing further to add. Question two, since Harris Scarf went into receivership late in 2019, does council now have a signed lease agreement with Harris Scarf? Its receivers or new owners have sold in grants covering its tenancy and council own premises at Centin Benton Way? And if so, what are the terms of the lease in months or years? Mr General Manager.
Yes, there, due to the impacts of COVID-19, council has a short term agreement in place for the new owners of Harris Scarf. That agreement expires on the 30th of July this year. Negotiations will shortly resume with the aim of finalising a long term lease for the property.
Thank you. Mr Adams, question three, with reference to item 5.1.3 openness and transparency on page 217 of the current agenda. I firstly commend the general manager and councillors for what appears to be a genuine effort to improve transparency in council matters and in turn public accountability. However, with respect, I do point out that the statement on page 218 in that I desire to see property transactions and leases considered in open session and that disclosure of contract and lease information being a condition for business with council, while essentially accurate does not spell out the full intent as to disclosures or subsequent implications. The suggestion is that council cease accepting or insisting on confidentiality clauses in contracts with third parties and in particular private enterprises benefiting from public funding or concessions. This in no way undermines council's ability to withhold information subject to sections 15 of the local government brief procedures regulations being matters addressed in files meetings. Accordingly, as this suggestion has failed to make the list of recommendations on page 220 as listed for discussion tonight, I ask will councillors include an item set in on every agenda actively desist from accepting or insisting on confidentiality clauses in agreements that contractually remove council's ability to make disclosures at sole discretion? Given that this is matters on tonight's agenda, there's nothing else I can add at this point. Question from Mr Douglas Janey at 23 Watkins and Street, Devonport, page 254 of the agenda suggests that the council will not spend more than 50% of the capital budget excluding the city component in 2019. One definition of a budget is an itemised allotment of funds for a given period. The total budget for the 2021 is £35.81 million, of which some £10.25 million is living city. Question, what has the council done or is doing to be able to spend a great part of the 2021 planned capital budget excluding the living city component within one action or given year? I understand Mr Skirling's got this one, thank you.
Thanks, ma'am, through you to the question. So as we're considering today on the agenda, council make an annual contribution towards an overall capital programme each year. That five year programme is managed on a rolling basis as projects progress through planning, consideration, community stakeholder consultation phases. And as those projects progress through the programme and significant expenditures required to proceed with them, the allocation is made towards individual projects. We don't believe that the total capital expenditure in any one given year against the allocation made in that year is the only strong indicator of performance against delivery of the programme. Certainly, there are certain projects in that programme that we expect to deliver over multiple years. Where there's a significant project requiring funding that can be spread across multiple years, that does happen, but that is always practical to manage each individual project on that basis. And certainly, grant funded projects often require a contribution from council upfront to press projects through that phase and has proven for us to make those allocations of projects as they progress. Another significant issue to consider is project funding at an individual project level includes appropriate contingencies and those contingencies, if they're not expended, actually provide an opportunity for council to reallocate those funds elsewhere in the programme or to other beneficial community activities. So we believe we've got a sound project management process in place at council and we also have clear and transparent reporting to our community of our progress of projects and also including expenditure. We certainly welcome any specific suggestions about how we may be able to improve that over time, but certainly we're comfortable with the processes we have in place at the moment and the reporting that we provide to our community during progress.
Thank you, Mr Skirling. And a question from Mr Bob Velkop of 11 Cocker Place, Devonport. I refer to page nine of the agenda in regard to my question on notice about probable place unpaid debts and the responses. My question is a follow up to the above and pertains in particular to questions two A and B and the responses authorised by general manager, Mr Atkins, who in council, i.e. staff and councillors, were privy to the intolerable situation that had developed and continued to occur? When were those who should have known about the non-plans informed? The G in response was, in response to questions one and two, council debt collection was managed by council for probable place as it would be for any data and is subject to review as part of the annual financial audit process. The reference that debt accumulated to an intolerable situation without adequate understanding or controls is wrong or misleading. As has been publicly explained, council acted appropriately and within its options to resolve issues with a former headless there in probable place. New questions. Question one, A, to clarify, mayor, I suggest the response was most petulant, all the more so because of the now proven misleading information previously told to that house that the probable place heat lease was based on sound normal commercial terms or words to that effect, supposedly drafted incomes with lease conditions taken from a standard term sheet which had been prepared by legal practitioner. The point I was trying to make were the large amounts being monitored on a monthly basis by the ordinary man. Is it therefore correct to say senior staff who knew of the unfolding problem that a significant amount of debt had accumulated did in fact keep all ordinary men well informed before the annual financial audit process? And B, what was the incremental amount of unpaid debt before it was brought to the attention of the ordinary man? Given that this was 2016, I'm prepared to respond and assure Mr Velkop that councillors at the time were aware of the status in regard to their payment by the headless there and were kept informed throughout that process. Question two, this question refers to the sale of land at two Craiglands, Devonport Park Limited. I was informed by the general manager that finalisation of the sale was before the end of the funding to a year. As of this date, the 22nd of June 2020, has council received final payment for the hotel site? I think my recollection is that Mr Velkop has been informed before that settlement date is the 20th of June.
That's correct.
And that's still, I understand.
That's correct.
Thank you. Question from Jenny Clare, 57 Gun Street, Devonport. Question one, in my email dated June 11, 2020, which was in reference to the land that has recently been cleared in Friends Street, Lassington Home Maker Centre by Best Street Developments, the general manager stated that in regard to this development, vegetation clearing and the impact on endangered species are matters outside council's jurisdiction and were not part of the assessment process. I have been informed that these matters should be part of council's assessment process. Could council explain how it's possible that our council does not take environmental assessments into account when making decisions on planning applications?
Yes, through you, ma'am, the body during planning scheme does have requirements in regard to assessment of the vegetation clearing and threatened species and that's outlined in the vegetation code of the scheme. However, the application to which Ms Clare refers did not trigger any requirements under this code. However, having said that, I can confirm that the area that has recently been cleared on site extends beyond the area approved under the permit. And council, together with the Forest Practices Authority, are currently pursuing that matter separately.
Thank you. Question two from Ms Clare, in an email dated Friday 18th of June 2020, Mr Atkins stated that the DA, the 76 house lots and two commercial lots at Friends Street was approved under delegation and not at a council meeting. What is the reason such a big development which involved the clearing of main porch which mainly habitat endangered species was dealt with by delegated authority and not at council meeting? Further, can council provide to the community the four guidelines which are used to determine which development applications may be delegated? One of the guidelines is that a development must go to council if there are no representations about it. Can council confirm that there were no representations about Friends Street development? There are a couple of things in there that seem to be not quite correct, ma'am.
Yeah, to clarify that, ma'am, the current delegations that the council operate under and have done for some time is that if there is a representation, it gets referred to the planning authority committee, not if there's not. And also, I think the statement there was made that it was a 76 lot subdivision, I can confirm that it was a 27 lot subdivision, not 76 lots. However, the current delegations that are provided by council to the general manager, the most recent ones can be found in the governance, finance and community services agenda that went to council on the 20th of January this year, that's still available on the website. In regard to the particular development up at Friends Street slash Stoney Rise, there's one representation relating to that DA and that related to traffic matters.
Thank you. And a third question from Ms Clare, in an email dated June 19, 2020, Mr Atkins stated in reference to the normal guidelines that there has been some exceptions during the state of emergency period to ensure applications are processed within required time frames. Can the council provide a full list of development applications that were exempt from the usual guidelines during the state of emergency and the outcomes of those applications? Was the Friends Street development one of the applications which was exempt from the non-legal guidelines?
Thanks, ma'am. The March week in council provided additional delegation to the general manager to ensure continuity of business during the COVID pandemic. This included the ability to approve planning applications which otherwise would have gone to the planning committee. There's been six applications that were considered under this delegation, all six were approved. That includes the Stoney Rise Friends Street application, which Ms Clare refers to, that includes an outbuilding at eight and a place, that includes two units at 111 Gun Street, includes demolition of a shed at the old mushroom factory at 193 Sheffield Road, includes a dwelling in three seat at court and demolition of the Bowls, our Bowls Clubrooms in 39A North Fenton Street.
Thank you. That brings questions without notice from the public to a close.
Why don't I ask a question in relationship?
Do you know?
So did we, if I missed that, did we have that sent to us, the last one that you distributed?
No, it's a question without notice, so no. Unless the person sends it to more than you.
Can we have that sent out to us?
There'll be a minute. Questions on notice from councillors, item 3.3, there are none at the time compiling the agenda. Item 3.4, notices of motion, again, there are none brought to this meeting. And item four is planning authority matters and again, there are none that have been brought to this meeting. Item five is reports and item 5.1, Mr Credit Coast Waste Management Group's 2021 annual plan and budget. Do I have a mover of the recommendation, please? So move. Mr Jarman, do I have a second?
Second.
Councillor Ennis, councillor Jarman.
Yes, look, I just note, I would like to actually just ask a question with this, on page 33, they were talking about the illegal dumping database, which I think is a great idea. Can we get a bit of a workshop on this perhaps to the general manager through you there and to talk further about what we could do to help and take that back to that meeting for next time? I've certainly got some ideas and I think we need to get people to start to gobbing people that are dumping. And we need to help them know that there's a database and know more information about what we can do. It's a huge problem, as we all know. And we're getting to the point where people are not wanting to pay tip fees, they're not happy they haven't got tip tickets, so they get lazy, they take a trial and they just dump their rubbish for a length of life. And unfortunately, we need people to be out there being our honest. So I'm just wondering if there's something we could perhaps talk at a workshop level or something that we could come up with, sort of, we could take that back to the authority?
Yes, through you, ma'am. Dolan have done quite a bit of work into illegal dumping and I know ML's got reports and information available, so I might get a copy of that and circulate amongst councillors and if necessary, we could then follow up with a workshop.
That would be great, thank you very much. Nothing further, it's a good report, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ennis.
Nothing further.
Any other comments? Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Jarman to close. I consider it closed, thank you. I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.2 is the cemetery strategy for 2011 to 2013. I recall on page nine, status of that strategy. Have a mover of the recommendation, please? So move. Mr Jarman, do I have a second then?
Second then.
Mr Hollister, thank you. Councillor Jarman.
I'm going to ask the question that I asked last time when I had the wrong cemetery and I do apologise for that, through you, ma'am, perhaps Mr Skirling. This is one for what's going on and what we're doing and how we're moving forward into the future, different ways of dealing with this situation that we have, when there's variables and there's now a lot more people getting promoted, but it's something that we have to deal with and it's part of being part of council. There has been requests numerously from people that are a little bit upset about how we're going into the future and dealing with having wonderful, the columns, for example, at Memorial Gardens. Now, people like to have the opportunity to show their love and appreciation of their dearly departed and they like to put things onto their headstones, let alone going into the column situation. Now, I find that we are getting better at it. With the new children's memorial, we've got that idea that people certainly will want to do some kind of memorial from themselves, it's an individual thing. And I know that the problem is, if you let people have carte blanche and they do whatever they like, it can get very messy and start looking a little bit tragic and not as we would like it to be. But I think we need to come up with a compromise. So I'm wondering if again, there's an opportunity that we could have a look, get a trip out there to see the wonderful new memorial that's hanging up for children, let alone the new memorial gardener with lock and it's all finished and it's beautiful and it's got more columns put in folk. But perhaps we need to consider how we can neatly allow some kind of vessel or some kind of attachment. kind of attachment so that people have the allowance to be able to put some kind of token of glass to these areas as well. I don't know how to go about it, so again, it might be a workshop, but I'm sure you're aware of, there is an issue where people want to be able to put things, but we don't want them just putting anything. Just wanted to get your comments perhaps, thank you.
Through you, Mayor. How to go, thanks for the question. It is an issue that's managed quite closely on site, and there aren't any plans to amend the management model at the moment in terms of memorialisations. I think part of the issue is certainly being conscious of the wishes of adjacent placements as well. The management team on site, I think, do a good job at the moment of managing additional items on placement, particularly directly after placements and memorial services occurred, and they manage that quite sensitively. We do also have issues with additional items being placed which aren't recognising adjacent placements, and we manage those quite closely on a one-on-one basis as well. There have been other instances at other cemeteries around the state where, I guess, a relaxation of management model over time has created issues for councils and become very difficult to unwind, and that has grown into permanent memorials, permanent placements and memorials. So I think it is worthy of ongoing discussion and consultation with the community. I think a significant way of managing that issue is making sure there's alternative options available for people to choose their placements at the time of memorial and that they have a clear understanding, I guess, around the management of those placements at the point in time where they make that selection. So it's certainly something we can consider in terms of making sure we have a solid range of options for people when they're choosing to make a placement at the cemetery. And I think it is an appropriate model that we clear and that we manage quite closely with the management of those placements going ahead.
Well done. Thank you. I just think that, like you're saying, if we can just discuss it a bit further, talking to the community, finding out what their thoughts are, just so that they know that we're considering and seeing what options we've got, that would be great. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jarman. Councillor Hollister.
Yes, I would like to actually congratulate the construction staff from council. I think they've done a fantastic job out there. And I presume this day support, day labour as well. And I think maybe, I believe, we're having a infrastructure and facilities tour at some stage, and I think this is probably a good time to look at some of these things that councillor Jarman has just mentioned. On a tool like that, you can see, bring up some of the ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hollister. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
Councillor Lacob.
Thank you. Yes, like councillor Hollister, I'd like to congratulate the team with what's been done, and especially the cemetery strategy committee was put together in 2011 because that was the basis of getting all this started. I have to say, I visited and had a look at the children's memorial pavilion, and that is lovely, something that parents that have lost their children have wanted for a long time. I think we need to be very proud of what we've brought together there. And it's very good to see, if you look through the strategy, that there's only two items that, it's disturbing that we haven't commenced this yet. And I'm particularly interested on page 51, 5.5, to identify other local people of significance. And I'm just wondering, do you and your staff do that, or is that perhaps going to go to Jeffon East then with the Best Street Maritime Heritage Committee? That's a nice project, but there wouldn't, I shouldn't say a nice project, but it's a project that probably fits under heritage.
Mr Scudd.
Through you, Mayor. Certainly something that we'll consult widely on. There has been some discussion around, I guess, the development of a heritage walk as well around Arendale, Devonport, and there will be a task to be completed in terms of identifying suitable locations to identify on that walk. But certainly also with the general cemetery as well, that was an opportunity that was identified with the silent project there also.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Jarman to close. Consider it closed, thank you. Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.3 is the retaining wall maintenance policy.
So moved.
Councillor Perry.
Second then.
Councillor Murphy. Councillor Perry.
Thanks, Mayor. We're essentially formalising a policy for the practice that we've been practising for several years now. I think that's a good idea because retaining walls do create some confusion. From time to time, we have to deal with that, particularly for retaining walls on neutral boundaries. So I think having a policy in place is something that we can defer to when we need to, maybe to evade confusion and just make our position, I guess, clearer to not only us, but the people that we potentially deal with on retaining wall issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perry, councillor Murphy.
Yeah, I agree with councillor Perry. I think the actual policy itself is very clear, very easy to read, and I think the diagram that's associated with it also makes it very clear in relation to whose responsibility is what. So I think that policies of this nature that do make it easier for developers or builders or homeowners, that make it pretty simple. So congratulations to the author. Wasn't awesome. So I think that's going to go a long way to addressing a number of these issues that we have here in Devon.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Councillor Hollister.
Councillor Hollister.
In relation to gavine walls, I know of a couple in Crossy Tier Road and one out of Tugger Road, and there's probably others. It seems to be a lot of bush and growth over some of them. I'm just wondering whether it's council's responsibility to keep these tidy because we get a fire, and most of those gavine walls are already galvanized. And I'd say that rust would get into those walls pretty quick if they get a fire. So I'm just wondering if there's any good news to be done with some of those gavine walls.
Perhaps I could ask the general manager to take that on board. Thank you. Were there any other comments, questions? Councillor Jarman, thank you.
So, does this clear up Stuart Street? Through you to events making?
Yes, through me. It certainly provides clarity around how we deal with Stuart Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if I may, that means, will that be dealt with retrospectively?
I think the policy really reflects the approach that's been applied in regard to that, in regard to that particular situation, and it's really capturing the practice that's been in place, documenting it.
Thank you. Councillor Perry to close.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thanks for your time for the contribution. I'll consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item 5.4 is the tender report for contract CT0277-01, supply and deliver and placement of hot mix fashion belt. Do I have a mover of the recommendation, please?
So move, Mayor.
Councillor Lacob, do I have a second then?
Second then.
Councillor Alexia, do you think councillor Lacob?
Straightforward, Mayor. It's rewarding the contract to home and spot mix, nothing further to add.
Thank you. Councillor Alexia.
Nothing further.
Any comments, questions?
Councillor Hollister again.
Councillor Hollister.
It's interesting reading some of the quotes. There's about almost 100,000 difference between the lowest to the highest. Obviously, the tenders are doing what they're supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Lacob to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.5 is the tender report for contract CT0277-02, supply, deliver and placement of sprayed victuous servicing. Do I have a mover of the recommendation, please?
So move.
Councillor Perry, do I have a second then?
Second then.
Second. Councillor Alexia, councillor Perry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. It's all in the report. And it's good to see quite a list of roads and streets there that have been resealed, certainly improve the amenity and landscape of our city to give them roads. So I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Alexia.
Yeah, looking forward to the work completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, suppose in relation to this particular one, can we ensure that they get the line marking right? Nook Street is a prime example, where we've gone through a reseal process, and if you've got the light in the wrong direction, if you're heading up Nook Street into it or coming down it when the sun's coming out from the east, the lines, they must have voted it up at some point in time. If we're going to correct it, can we get it corrected properly?
I'll ask the general manager to take that on board. Thank you. Are there any other?
I have another.
Councillor Murphy? Councillor Hollister, sorry.
I have another street too. When you come off the bridge of lights over East Devonport, it's been resealed for quite some time, and there's line marking dividing it into two lanes, sort of starts at the end, but the victim has been renewed. So probably needs taking up to the lights.
Thank you. Not sure if that's our road, but I'm sure the general manager will take that on board. Councillor Perry to close.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Now that I'm about line marking, I've got one too. The line might get the car parked adjacent to the auto oval. You've got two linear sections of parking. There's one section way too far from the road, because what it's done is jammed the two together. So if the car park's full, the cars coming out of one set, one of those lines into the other, or backing out, they're going to hit, if they're not careful, the back of the cars in the other line. So there was at least two more metres that the lines could have gone close to the road without causing any infringement or any impingement on anyone parked on the road or any safety issue. So I thought that was quite strange, and it would have been time to go past there most mornings. I think, why do we do that? Apart from that, I'll close, thank you.
Thank you. We've gone slightly off the line, but.
I think perhaps we would have a look.
And ask for, constantly back and ask for a vote. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.6 is the tender report for CT097, new craft heart facilities upgrade. Do I have a mover of this exciting development? Thank you.
Councillor Jarman.
I'll shake them then.
Councillor Perry. Councillor Jarman.
It is exciting. I was very pleased to be at the announcement when all the hard work had been done and put together from Richard Bidwell through to Mike Gaffney, and everyone was involved. It was such a good project, the way they went about it. They've got everyone on board, and that's an old building. That's been there a long time. And that's one of our most utilised and most versatile grounds, because there's so many different sports that utilise that area. So this is going to be just, you know, the icing on the cake for that area. We've done so much work down there. Place is looking fantastic, and it's just an eyesore, this little building. It's a bit sad. So it's a bit of time, and I think it's going to finish off the place. So, well done to everyone involved, well done to everyone getting it up and running, well done to all the money that's being put forward. And can't wait to see the opening day of that, because all the kids will get to use it, and it's just going to be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'll endorse councillor Jarman's comments, and yet this has really been a fantastic effort by a range of stakeholders over a three-year period, which in reality for a project like this is quite quick, to organise $1.5 million worth of funding and deal with three levels of government and get the plans done in three years is quite an effort. So congratulations to all the stakeholders involved, and looking forward to it being completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yeah, I'd just like to add my comments to that, having been involved in the committee from when they first set it up, and certainly I know we've had staff involved as well and helping guide through the grant application process and all of that stuff. So I thank our staff for that, and that it's been funded from other organisations, that council have the overarching role of managing the project, and it certainly will be an asset for many members of our community for some time to come and well overdue. Thank you. Councillor Jarman to close. Consider it very happily closed. Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.7, rates and charges policy. Do I have a mover of our policy for this next financial year? Thank you.
So move.
Councillor Perry, do I have a second then? Awesome. Councillor Murphy, thank you. Councillor Perry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. If your rates and charges policy is merely procedural, essentially underpins the next item on the agenda, so this will be happy to add upon what's in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Yobin.
Nothing further.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Just one, Councillor Jarman.
Look, congratulations on this. Obviously, with what we've been through, but all the things that have been discussed about rates going forward with COVID-19, having the Emergency Management Committee that was formed by councillor Perry, and all the discussions that are going on, I'm just wondering that we need to be a little bit clearer with how we are here for the people that need us. I do take note that on page, there we go, 73, we just say rate pays who have difficulty in paying for their rates, either in full, are encouraged to contact council works office to make an alternative payment plan. Get that. And then further down on page 74, it does have a financial hardship policy, which we have coming up to look at. So I'm just wondering, in that section, do we need to reiterate, or is it clear enough? I just, I think we just need to make sure that we know that everybody has the opportunity to talk to us if they are suffering hardship currently that have to pay rates. And there was also another section, and I'm not sure where it is, sorry, where also said about what our recovery of rates is normally, and I don't think that we really then changed that. And forgive me for not being able to find exactly where that was, if I will be, I didn't let you know. But it said somewhere where if someone hasn't paid their rates up to the date that they meant to, we need it paid in full, so if they're not doing instalments. Now, again, do we then reiterate then at that point, however, if you are suffering hardship, please contact council. Just saying, I just think we need to be very clear and very open, because lots of people are out there saying, well, what are you going to do? What is there for us? They don't read our Facebook pages, they don't look up our websites, they're not wanting to read the news, but they, I just think we just need to be really, really open as much as we can, because we've got that opportunity available for people, and we are being very open and transparent about the fact that we are willing to look at everybody's different situation and help them at this time. So I'm just wondering if we can perhaps make some changes to some of the wording or just reiterate every time. However, if you are seeking, if you're in hardship, please contact council. I just, I think we only say it once, and I think we need to say it and reiterate it at those different points. I'm sorry that I don't know the part where it does say that if you don't pay your rates, it has to be paid in full. Again, that's pretty harsh if someone was reading only that section. Just get the general manager's thoughts on that.
Yes, through you, Mayor. I guess any of our communication around rates this year would make a point of saying that council's got hardship policy in place, and this is, I guess, this rates policy, sort of, standing policy that hasn't changed for quite a few years now. And the hardship policy was the document that council adopted back in April, I think it was April or May, to deal with residential hardship issues, and then tonight there's a special adendum to that around commercial properties. So I guess it's really those documents that we see, the ones that we're promoting to the community specifically for this COVID period.
That's right. But I have just found that it is still part of part seven. So in the payment rates, it's on the next page, page 74 at the top. Instalment payments must be made on or before the date, and if failure to do so will result in a full outstanding amount becoming due and payable immediately.
Which is actually a hundred and eighty bucks, yeah.
Of course, of course, but these are unprecedented times.
Yeah.
So I just, we just need to make sure.
Take on what you're saying. I guess, from my point of view, I don't know, probably a dozen times at least in radio interviews or on the website, conversation, but particularly in radio, I've raised the fact that I have an issue, I really should talk to this. they really should need to talk to us and move on. And reiterate that we do have the policy, but they need to talk to us. And I really could lost count how many times I've said that. So.
Yeah, that's fair enough.
Most people have picked it out. And even as the general manager has said, this is our policy. That doesn't mean that there can't be arrangements put in place. And we would prefer to make sure that they get in touch with us, so that they can.
Well, I guess my next question would be, any more in my name? Through to Matthew, are we putting something on the rates policy with rates? No, it's not going to happen.
Through you, ma'am. A, yes, the rates notice does refer to hardship policy.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Eris?
Thank you. I think anyone in this situation would be seeking out and finding out themselves. And if not, which should they referring to? If you're having issues with paying your rates, you can't just pretend and disappear because.
Thank you. Any other comments? Council Perry to close.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I take Council Jarman's point and commend her for making the point that if perhaps possible, we could in immediate release of standard from any decisions tonight on the annual plan and budget estimates and rates and charges policy. We may like mention the hardship policy again and also refer to general manager's comments. We are dealing with an addendum to the hardship policy item 5.9, which again raises the issue. But, you know, I agree. I don't think there's any reason why we can't include some sort of media release or the media that comes out of tonight's meeting. Consider that a total closer to that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Who are you against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.8 is the annual plan and budget estimates for 2021. Do I have a mover of that in motion, please?
So moved.
Council Perry? Council Eris? Council Perry?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Well, this is probably certainly in my time and probably most ever around the table time. One of the toughest budgets we've had to prepare. Basically, we were estimated to lose $3 million or $3.3 billion of revenue. And we're predicting underlying deficit of $2.2 million, I think it was. So, you know, in a roundabout way, we've clawed back a million dollars from potentially that really bad situation. Now, I think everyone knows in this room, and I think everyone that knows that's interested, that this budget and estimates has been set against the backdrop of a very, very difficult time. I think highly unreasonable for people to think any differently of that. You know, this is our fifth year or no rates increase. So five out of the last six years, we've had no rates increases. And the year that we did was 1.5%. So we're certainly punching well below inflation. Even still, we've not increased any rates and fees and charges in our upcoming budget in consideration of the capital situation at the moment. So for us to do that took a mountain of work from our management and staff, from general manager down, our senior management, everyone in the building and also councillors. I think the process that we had with the videos, five videos in five nights was demanding. But at least we could go to those videos at any point in time that we had the time to do it. And out of that comes some really good suggestions from just about every council. I think just about everyone was around the table, put up something to add value to the process. So I think I agree with that. But I will commend again everyone in this room that's contributed to the setting of our budget. It's been difficult. We are still on solid footing, even given the loss in revenue that we are due suffer. And yeah, practically on a bit now. Well done to everyone and I hope everyone supports it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Eris?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really impressed the way that we've managed to still continue with Capital Works and so forth in there. We've been fortunate enough to have quite a bit of support in grants from other levels of government, which has been very valuable for us. And I think it's, I think we've done the best we can in the most trying of circumstances. And if there's going to be a rainy day, this is it, I think. And so we've done a good job.
Thank you. Council Eris, any other comments? Council Locom?
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to concur with what Council Perry has said. I'd like to take a moment while I've got the chance to read page 118. For those that are watching tonight that don't have it, a general won't get online and have it all. Because I think it's very important that the coronavirus pandemic has stripped millions of dollars from the bottom line, both in terms of foregone revenue and the need to make unbudgeted economic support available to our community. We've foregone the 2019-20 final Taswater dividend of $550,000. The same with 2021 Taswater dividends, and that will total $1.1 million. Waving of sport card ground fees and facility rent for six weeks. Waving of food licensing fees for 2021. Loss rent from commercial and community tenants as a result of legislation requiring landlords to provide financial relief. Loss of the Paranapool Convention Centre income with the cancellation or postponement for approximately 80 external meeting rooms, the highest of those rooms, and 13 major events. Loss of income due to the closure of regional facilities such as Splash Aquatic, Paranapool Theatre and the Bass Strait Marathon Centre. We've foregone the parking revenue budget at approximately $500,000. Commercial and residential rate relief measures such as deferrals and waivers as outlined in council's hardship policy. Additional community grants to support pandemic recovery and significant reduction of income from fees and charges due to economic downtown. The dividend board council traditionally generating a high percentage of its own revenue rather than depending on government operating grants. The financial impact of COVID-19 on the organisation has been significant. But fortunately, the council is in a sound financial position and has the capacity to endure the short term. Sorry, the short-term impacts was continuing to provide services, invest in the future and remain financially sustainable over the long term. And I think they are very important points. And it's very good what our council has done considering all those issues. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Council Locom. Council Millborn?
Thank you, ma'am. Well done, Council Locom. You couldn't have said any better. I think it is worth noting that the financial impacts in relation to those dividends for Taswater are relatively significant in relation to our overall budget. The other mitigating factor I think that's worth noting is that the construction that's occurring in the city. I think it's around about $57 million, which will continue to, you know, drive the city forward. I think that's going to be a good thing in relation to supporting local businesses and those businesses that are involved in those things. And our ability to ensure that through the Capital Works Programme, that we can continue to support local businesses within the community and outside of, within the region. So I agree with the other speakers. Well done to our executive team. The process was being via video was interesting at times. I much prefer, I will be open and honest. I would much prefer had those discussions around the table face to face. But we managed to get through it and it was a job well done.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, thank you. Ms. Peddles, you had a comment to make around the fees and charges?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In relation to part E of the recommendation, the draft annual plan includes a schedule of fees and charges. A small number of these fees and charges are linked to a fee unit and a penalty unit that's set by the state government. Earlier in the year, the state government actually gazetted increases to these fees. However, we've been informed today that the fee unit and penalty unit will remain at the current level, so there will be no increase. So the increase is reflected in the schedule, but council staff will review and restate those affected fees and will reissue the draft schedule.
So that's for a small number of fees that are set by state government?
There's around eight.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the update.
We don't have the amount, do we? Is that what you're going to say?
It's only a small answer, my understanding.
Very small. There'd be about a dollar on each fee. Very small.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And I guess I just want to reiterate that my thanks to the general manager and his staff. As you all are aware, it was a difficult time to be setting a budget. And for a general manager, his first budget. But, and given the pretty budget, everyone was working in isolation throughout that period of time, not only staff but us as councillors, you know, to be able to arrive at a budget that we can adopt tonight. I guess with the understanding that it will be a continual, something that will be continuing to look at and update and then to continue to work on. But I want to thank the staff for that. I know that there are several councils around the state that have decided to postpone adopting a budget. But I'm really pleased that we've been able to do that and have a way forward to work on into the new financial year. So thank you, everyone, for that. And I'll ask Council Perry to close.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thanks, everyone, for their contributions. Everyone made a very sound contribution. I just want to pick up on a couple of points. Council Eris mentioned the degree of external funding that we've secured, which I've missed. That's a very good point. And I think that points to two things. It points to the talent in our team to be able to secure the funding and the legitimacy of the projects that we sought funding for. So that was a fantastic effort. And also make the point, the Local Government Association benchmarks councils, all councils across the state. And they kind of put us in the same bracket of councils of the same size. And we are, on most of those criteria, well ahead of the rest of the councils, which is, I guess, if you really want to compare our performance compared against other councils, those benchmarks will give you a factual idea, not an emotional one, a factual idea of how we're actually going. So again, well done and I'll close. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Who are you against? Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. Well done, everyone. Item 5.10 is the Tasmanian Canine Defence League Dog Pound Agreement. Do I have a mover, please? Oh, sorry, what was I missing? 5.9? Item 5.9 is the addendum to the Financial Hardship Assistance Policy. Do I have a mover of the recommendation, please?
So moved.
Council Hollister, do I have a second one? Council Mertin? Council Hollister?
Nothing further. Do I have to sort my report?
Thank you. Council Mertin?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. I think it was important that we could actually make this addendum. So as Council Hollister has just said, there's nothing further. He's pretty much right.
Thank you. And again, my apologies, I've got to hit the mistake. Any comments, questions from anyone else? Council Millborn?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm in support of this policy and the premise of the policy. I think it's really important that we put together. I'd just like to highlight on page three of the policy, the application status. It acknowledges that the policy stipulates that the person must make their application in writing, either by email or by letter, signing that evidence is needed to get. And this demonstrates what is needed, that the person doing this is able to articulate their financial position and their financial hardship. Being that our electorate is in one of the, has one of the highest rates of literacy in the country. I'd like to just question whether we can either reword this or do we have a system in place that people can access for assistance into form such a letter?
Can I just point out this is for commercial purposes?
I don't think that we can.
That's fair, isn't it?
Yes. Thank you for finding words for me.
My understanding would be that if someone called us, I'm sure one of our staff would speak with them and work through the process with them. Would I say generally just confirm that? I can't, I would hope that it wouldn't preclude anyone. Maybe part of the policy that all of us.
Through you, ma'am. It's a good point. And that would be our approach. I think if it was, if someone came in and raised an issue and it was obvious that they were struggling to document that, we would probably sit down with them and assist them through that process and talk to them completely necessary paperwork.
Great, thank you. I know I'm a teenager in business and as a teacher as well, our rates of literacy are extremely low in a lot of areas. And we do have people that function very well and running their own businesses. But when it comes to articulating themselves to a letter, they find that very difficult. So I think it's something we just need to be aware of. And perhaps even, you know, assistance can be sought for this within our policies perhaps in the future.
The other thing to note, ma'am, is we do, I think we mentioned in the policy, it would be accept a letter from their accountants or their advisors. So that would be, could be an avenue in relation to them.
Thank you for raising that. It's an important point. Are there any other comments, questions? Council Hollister to close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. Now, item 5.10, Tasmanian Canine Defence League Dog Pound Agreement. Do I have a mover of the recommendation, please? Council Jarman? Second one?
Second.
Council Mertin? Council Jarman?
Yeah, this is all pretty straightforward and very necessary that we look after them and have an agreement that works so that we can let them keep doing what they do and what a good job that does. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Millborn?
Yes, I think it's worth noting that in the report, it states quite clearly that it represents good value for money. So that was very important to me.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Council Millborn, if you still. Thank you. Council Perry?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just for the Council Millborn's point, it says if a new agreement is not reached with this, the three councillors in council would not be able to provide the same level of service for the same budget allocation. So certainly in our best interest to maintain the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Council Jarman to close.
And we might need to consider putting some stables in so we can get lost horses all the time there. We don't know how to deal with them. I think they're going to need to start putting their mobile phones on the horse's horse. It's very hard. But they do a very good job at the Dog Pound. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask for the vote. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.11 is the Sports Infrastructure Master Plan Working Group. Item 5.11 is the Sports Infrastructure Master Plan Working Group. The terms of reference to set up this group, do I have a mover, please? So, councillor Milburn, do I have a second one?
Second.
Councillor Ennis, thank you, councillor Milburn.
It's really exciting that we're moving towards this group. We have a large amount of community involvement in sports. And we all know the benefits that that brings to our community. This will make sure that we aren't competing for funding, hopefully, after we bring the community together to look at the needs and wants of each of the sporting facilities and to ensure that moving forward that we have a master plan to refer to when the community involvement comes to us.
Thank you, councillor Ennis.
Thank you, I think just one of the key, the key parts of when people make a decision to live in the city or enjoy living in our city is the infrastructure that has to do with sport. Because I know families continually wanting to do things with their, with their children, et cetera. And for us to have a well thought out and planned structure is a good thing. So I'm looking forward to having the master plan in place.
Thank you, any other comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Councillor Alexia.
Yeah, just wanted to add on to that point, councillor Ennis said that is, that local sports are going to really benefit from this. But not only that, it's just the interstate sports that happen in Devonport as well are really going to enjoy the, the centres that we have and all the infrastructure that we have. So it's pretty important that we get this up and running and having a good support.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, I agree with the previous speakers. We have had a couple of iterations of this type of committee in my title in council that have just evaporated, eventually evaporated. So I hope if this committee gets up, we get some good representation on it and actually drive it forward with some meaningful reforms and with some meaningful outcomes. So that the community, sporting community knows where we're heading in the next 10, 20, 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All eyes on councillor Murphy to close, please.
Thank you for my fellow councils, for your input, sounds very positive, nothing's a threat clause.
Thank you, I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.12 is the Street Trading Bylaw Number One of 2020. Do I have a mover of the recommendation, please?
So moved.
Councillor Murphy.
I'll say again.
Councillor Perry. Councillor Murphy.
Yes, ma'am, it's just me, the procedural authorising fixing of the common seal which is required for the bylaw.
Thank you, councillor Paul.
Thanks, yeah, I support councillor Murphy's comments and just provides clarity, again, similar to the retaining law policy. So that we be able to have these clearly documented and adopted, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments? Councillor Murphy to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you, I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.13, openness and transparency. There's that recommendation on page 220, I think, yes, thank you. The general manager had commented at.
Thanks, ma'am, just wanted to point out a error in the report on page 218. It says there that the average percentage of items considered closed across other councils was 86.2. It should be considered in open, not closed.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do I have a mover of the motion, please?
I'd like to move the motion but with a change or an added item to the recommendation if possible. So I'm taking on Malcolm Gardens' request that came through in the previous questions I noticed to council. He asked for us to look at putting into those items, there's six items there, I agree with all of those. However, he's suggested an item seven, that is to actively desist from accepting or insisting on confidentiality clauses in agreements that contractually remove council's ability to make disclosures at its sole discretion. I'd just like to see how my colleagues feel about adding that item.
So you're moving that as the motion?
Yes, so the extra item added.
You have that, so you're not. I suppose one I.
I think it's second or first.
Of course. Just want to talk, so this has left me with a screen, thank you. So we have a mover of the recommendation with the addition of item seven. Do I have a second one?
Go second.
Councillor Jarman.
Thank you. Look, the whole point is, this report is recommending that we adopt several actions to improve governance practices in a number of areas beyond statutory, beyond statutory obligations into a response to motions passed to councils last annual general meeting. So I certainly believe that we need to get better at what we do, about being open and transparent and what we do with public money, it's public money. We take the rates and we do what we will. We do a very, very good job. This council is amazing at what it has done over the past 19 years that I've been involved. I'm extremely proud of what's been achieved here, it's incredible. But too much we look like we're doing things behind closed doors that we've not been open and transparent. It's an old catch 22. And I understand that there are times that we will have to, no matter what, do things that are confidential and do some things in closed session. That's why we have a closed session section that other councils do use as well quite regularly. This item seven you will see is saying that we will actively desist. It's not saying we have to, but we will actively try our best not to have things that are too much inconfidential and that are behind closed doors because we are dealing with the community and the public. And too many times it's looked like we spin doctor our answers out to the public that may question us about what we're doing. And we've been found foul in the last agreement that we had. We lost a general manager over it, let's be frank. And we need to move forward in the best possible way and do the best possible open governance that we can. And I think this clause, this item seven, is quite important for us to consider every time we move forward into another agreement so that we can't be in the same situation we were with the last agreement. That's it, that's all I'm saying, thank you.
Councillor Alexia.
Yeah, I'll just clarify, so councillor Jarman, I would just say, I believe strongly in all the principles of being open and transparent as much as possible. While I quite often have rate buyers come and approach me on a daily basis, asking me these questions that somewhat can answer, somewhat can't answer. But the more open and transparent that the council is, that I think everyone will have a better understanding of how a council operates.
Thank you, any other comments? I'll just ask the general manager to comment.
Councillor Murphy, just to provide some advice on the amendment, I guess. Again, following on from what was discussed at the workshop on this matter, I guess we see that item one is really adopting that principle that everything where possible goes in open. Mr. Gardens' question was particularly talking about leases and contracts. And as we talked about in the workshop, our advice is that there is, we would be putting council at a disadvantage in some situations if we chose to apply a blanket rule that we would always deal with those things in open. So our advice would be that item one covers the principles, I guess, that Mr. Gardens raising and the amendment wouldn't be necessary.
My own answer to that? I don't agree with anything. This is actually dealing with the agreements. The top one is talking about defined governance principles of your concluding specific reference to consider matters in open session as much as possible, that's about considering. This is, this item seven is talking about more about confidentiality clauses in the agreements. And again, it's not a blanket thing that we don't do them, it's actively desist from accepting. So we need to just be open to consideration every time we go back into another agreement.
Councillor Jarman, you can close the debate when your time comes.
All right, well, I'm just answering because he's suggesting that one is covered by seven, it's not.
Thank you. I've got councillor Ennis next.
Thank you. Yes, this, this particular point seven, maybe could be called the proper place clause that has come back to bite us a little bit and it will continue to raise its head. So I think if the proper place result or whatever happened there, what wasn't there, then of course this will need to be talked about. So I think it's just something we need to take on board and consider going forward. Okay, it's very hard to go back. Going forward, we need to take, take notice of these things and be aware and try not to make the same mistake again.
Councillor Holster.
I believe that we need professional advice from our staff and proper legal advice before we go into any, any other clauses to this. We didn't lose our previous general manager. If there's a proper place, we lost him because of abusive, disrespectful bullying, that's my opinion. And I'm not prepared to support any change of this at this stage. I think we need professional advice, the general manager's given us some just now. So they disagree with the deputy mayor. So that's my opinion, I think we need legal advice in matters to just what this does. We're already under the local government, top of what goes into confidential and what doesn't. So I can't say that until we get further advice.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, ma'am. Two things, one question is, can we move a procedural motion to defer this back to another workshop for further discussion? That's my first question.
You can move it, you might have to decide then.
Right, now, to simplify, the wording in relation to point seven, it's interesting. But I understand, and I think I can interpret what the author of that particular recommendation has made. And I'll say that in, obviously it's been brought up and we know why it's there. But if we put it this way, if we go to the community and we explain to them a particular asset's going to return publicly, we tell them it's going to return X amount of dollars, but then the members of the public ask as to whether rent's being paid and then we can't because of confidentiality, I think that's where something like this is going to sort of clear that up. And specifically I'm talking about that the Devonport City Council went to the community with an annual return of $400,000 per annum for proper place. But then when a member of the community then is asked, asked the question as to whether rent is being paid due to confidentiality, the clauses in that contract, we can't confirm or deny. So it's a bit of a double edged sword in relation to we say how much money we're going to get, but then we can't tell you whether we're actually getting it. So I can understand where, I understand the premise behind point seven. But I think it may be worth that we move a procedural motion to take this back to a workshop. Because I think we can go around this table and it would be an ongoing debate for quite some period of time. And I wholeheartedly believe we do need to get this right.
So you're moving that motion, councillor Murphy?
Yes, I'd like to move that motion.
Do I have a second one for councillor Murphy's motion?
Second.
Councillor Lecop. I'll just put the motion there at that point that we take this.
You have it.
So the motion is that the matter of item 5.13 is deferred until we have another opportunity to discuss it at a workshop. I have a mover of councillor Murphy, second one, councillor Lecop. I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Thank you, the motion's carried, thank you councillor Murphy. Thank you, so this, item 6.1, workshops and briefings since our last meeting. Do I have a mover of the recommendation, please?
You do mean.
Councillor Lecop, do I have a second? Councillor Perry, councillor Lecop.
It's all in me, nothing to add.
Thank you, councillor Perry.
Nothing to add, thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Councillor Lecop to close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.2 is the mayor's monthly report, do I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Councillor Holster, a second one?
Second.
Councillor Murphy, thank you, councillor Holster.
So with the report, we've been just as busy here with the virus about.
Not quite so, but there's been a bit happening, thank you, councillor Murphy.
Well done, ma'am, me, me, procedural, nothing.
Any other comments, questions? Councillor Holster to close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.3 is the general manager's report for June 2020. Do I have a mover of the recommendation, please?
So moved.
Councillor Perry, second one?
I think it's second definitely.
Councillor Lecop, councillor Perry.
I would need to get out more, we're half a minute, thank you.
I'll be all ready to get out more, councillor Lecop.
We don't even have to read all these pages of the hard work that's been done because we know with our budget and everything and, you know, at the end of the day where we are and what we've been able to do for our rate buyers, I think you can say the general manager's been working very hard. Thank you for that, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, any other comments, questions for the general manager? Councillor Perry to close.
Yeah, look, in all seriousness, I do agree, councillor Lecop, you know, we've had lots of videos on the budget, lots of working information videos that the general manager is clearly uncomfortable with, but still pushes on for 20 odd minutes and gets all the information out that we need to know in these difficult times. So yeah, he's done a great job and I'm sure everyone's supported, thank you.
Thank you, I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.4 is the Development and Health Services Report, do I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Councillor Holster, do I have a second one?
Second.
Councillor Alexia, councillor Holster.
Nothing further with the report.
Thank you, councillor Alexia.
Yeah, I wish you a report, well, it's all there, thank you.
Thank you, any comments, questions?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Just in relation to the incidental, internal incident types, property damage. It says six reports, a break-in at a transfer station damaged a gas pipe. Is that total or is there more, or is it just not worth writing down?
Through you, ma'am. Thank you. Yeah, I have generalised, we had a number of break-ins at the transfer station, so that makes up the numbers. I just didn't specify them as individual items.
Okay, so we've actually had more than one, okay.
That's correct.
So is that an issue for us that we?
Through you.
Probably not.
The, the transfer station has quite a history of break-ins, goes through various stages. I guess it's a wire fence around the boundary, very difficult to not have break-ins there. The dumped vehicles get relocated to there and there's times when they, for a number of reasons, become perhaps an item of interest for people, as are some of the other items.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Murphy, are there any other questions? Councillor Lecop?
Thank you, ma'am, just want to comment on the building and facilities maintenance with my interests as chair of High Hill up there, looking really good. It was good to talk to staff when they were up there during the lockdown. They were, they were out there working very hard. Just wondering, I can see what we've done, so we've pressure cleansed and paved as at the surf pub and that. How's our little, I have a question through to Mrs. Lundson, ma'am, if that's okay. How's our little green machine going? Is it, is it getting? if that's okay, how's our little green machine going, is it, is it any chewing gum off our pavers, that's the question.
Through you there, I think you might be on the next report, councillor Lacob.
Am I?
Perhaps Mr. Skirving would like to answer that for you.
I'm sorry, I've got to look at him myself, that's his construction, I'll hold that one and bring it up in a couple of hours, thank you.
Special.
Yes.
Um, any other comments, questions? Councillor Hollister to close.
To the close.
I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.5 is the infrastructure and works report, do I have a mover please? So moved. Councillor John.
I'll second that, thank you.
Councillor John.
Uh, yeah, just in reference to the photo there, so great to see, we've got some kind of landing at that beach, the dump beach, always been a problem getting across those rocks, especially if you're a dog on a lake that falls, it's not fun, so people have just been commenting and making some lovely comments about it. We know it's not easy to do because of the tide, it's not a simple thing of putting a big run out of there, but it's something and people are so appreciative and there's been some lovely comments, I don't know if it's been passed on, but it needs to be passed on because it's, it's a well utilised dump beach, it's a really lovely place to go and just nice to see that council have done something for the people who use it.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Lacob.
I will reiterate what I said about High Hill and I'll direct my question through you ma'am to Mr. Skirving, we did purchase and I, I didn't know, but the green machine, but somebody did, I was always asking for a machine that would bring pavers up, you know, really clean them and hopefully get some of the chewing gum off the pavers to tidy up around our buildings in the city and I'm just wondering how the little machines go, simple as that.
Through you ma'am, the news, paver scrubbers go well, chewing gum is probably the bane of every local government authority in Australia.
Yes.
And that machine might necessarily address that issue specifically, certainly help with the visual amenity of pavers around town, particularly some of the colours that we have within our CBD that need that additional work, but certainly got programmed to cleanse those areas on regular basis, but chewing gum is always an ongoing issue.
All right then, so we'll have to perhaps hope next time we get the latest model that might be able to do that, thank you Mr. Skirving.
Thank you, are there any other comments, questions? Councillor Murphy?
Yeah, if I may through, it's probably to Mr. Skirving in relation to the northern Rock Street wood path compared to the exposed acre part compared to the southern Rock Street acre part, there's a significant, there is, so I want to talk a bit out in front of you up to the end of northern Rock Street here, there seems to be a considerable difference in the, in the quality between the two, is that something that we're going to address with the contractor? Because it is considerable, the difference between the two different surfaces between southern Rock Street and northern Rock Street.
Through you ma'am, so particularly regarding waterfront park and the works in north of the Rock Street, there is a different aggregate blend that's being used in the contract on that, on that particular project and I understand that was chosen as part of a part and value management process on that project. So there is a, there should be a, should be reasonable to expect a colour difference but in terms of quality of work and workmanship, that we wouldn't be accepting any changes to our normal, normal practices, if there are issues there, we have some quality management processes in place that we'll be reviewing those, but certainly in terms of different exposed aggregate concrete paths around town, at times there are differences in blends even from the same quarry, but I know specifically on that, on the waterfront park project, there is a, a different blend being used in terms of the exposed paths and there will be a slight visual difference to some others, but in terms of quality, there shouldn't be any, any quality difference in terms of our, our delivery.
Just considering, obviously it was done at a different time of year to southern Rock Street, so I'm wondering whether the amount of water, because it seems to appear that the density of the actual seal in the top part of the concrete seems to be corroded.
I'll ask Mr. Skirving to take that on board and provide some follow up information. Thank you. Uh, councillor Hollister.
So I've got a couple of things, I'm wondering about the green machine that does the actual clean, wondering whether we need to do, if we're doing 10 times a year, maybe maybe 12 or 14, because we're doing a lot of new paving and support in the CBD and some of it's quite disgusting, the cleaning is solid. Also, I've noticed that we've got brand new concrete on part of Dave's building there and the owners of Dave's building obviously don't consider taking the effort to stop the pigeons roosting in some of their beer meats and things, which makes one hell of a mess, so I think if the label was just going to go, they'd cancel all the door because it looks disgraceful, so.
Again, take that on board, thank you. Councillor Ennis.
Thank you, I'm not sure who, who's going to be responsible for this, but the, the new path that heads over towards the Australian Maritime Centre is fantastic, the path's pretty good, but I would say someone could do something about the plubbards there, that would be really good because walking across that path for some older people would be quite treacherous and if there's any way to discourage the plubbards right there would be really good. Relocate it would be fantastic.
Mr. Ennis, plubbards have been raised on several occasions, certainly well fed around them, they are a protected species and we have to learn to be fit for them. Are there any other comments, questions?
Yeah, thanks ma'am, I just like that, that path is really, is really cool, I think that's going to create a lot of walk traffic during the summer, it's going to connect the Maritime Museum with the other side of the road and I think that that will really increase usage, walk usage along that part of Victoria Parade, so it's probably one of the most efficient paths I've ever seen in my life, it really was, it is going to be good during the summer, I suppose now. And the plubbards will, they'll get used to, well, they're probably sick of people walking through there and may, may go on there somewhere else, let's just see.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Councillor John, close. It was, it was, a long time ago, it was. Consider it closed, thank you. Thank you, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item seven is section 32, section 33 committees and our reports since our last council meeting, that brings the open section of this council meeting to a close at 7.08.